First up for opening statements, Mr. David Belden.
Good evening. My name is David Belden and I would like to start by thanking all of the sponsors and the moderators for hosting this event. Thank you to Mrs. Leone and Mrs. Philmore for their interest in running for a seat on the Board of Education. Thank you to Beth Banko for seeking a third term on the Board. Beth currently serves as our Vice President and her contribution to the success of our schools has been extraordinary. I would also like to thank my wife, my Ann, for all the support she's given me throughout 20 years of Board service. You are my rock. We have four children who graduated from Portland High School. One of them, we are very proud to say chose to be a teacher. We have six grandchildren, two have moved to attend Portland, with a third to follow. Someone recently asked me why I'm running for another term on the Board. Here are my reasons. I am a proud graduate of Portland High School and my desire to be back to my community through Board service runs strong. Twenty years ago, I ran for a seat on the Board of Education pledging to serve with a passion. Now today, I seek my sixth term with that same passion. I have experience well beyond any other candidate that provides stability to our school system. I understand the importance of a strong financial position that supports teachers, students, and programs. I understand the importance of compromise. I have earned the trust and support of my community. I, together with my Board peers, have created an environment that allows our district to flourish. We bring no personal agendas to the table. We understand what our role is and what our role is not. I have a proven track record based on performance, not promise. I am involved, whether it's a past or current member of strategic planning, an assistant golf coach, a donor, a spectator, a parent, a business advisory member, or a member of the Policy, Extracurricular, Finance, Safety, and Labor Committees of the Board. The list of achievements we have made over the past years is staggering. We transitioned from a junior high to a middle school. We instituted team teaching. We closed Porridge and Tava schools and moved a Board office. We instituted all-day kindergarten. We opened a brand-new elementary school. We opened a brand-new middle school which deserved distinction as a high progress school of Ohio. We completely remodeled the town into an intermediate school. We opened a brand-new Board office on our campus to manage our district. And most recently, we completed renovation of Trulay Stadium. Let's look at what's going on in our system. We have had a high school that has earned every single indicator on the ODE report card for more than five years. We provided laptops, laptop computers for students in fifth grade through 10th grade. We implemented the Navigator Program that encourages innovative teaching in classrooms from kindergarten through 12th grade. Our marching band is without equal. Our touch of class competed in New York City last year earning national distinction. Our high school robotics team competed all the way to South Dakota. Our football team made the state playoffs and just last week, our girls tennis team won the SBC. Let me talk a little about finances. One of the most important jobs I have as a Board member is to spend taxpayer dollars as wisely as possible. We have a solid carryover savings account right now, the result of outstanding fiscal management where we have balanced our budget 10 of the last 10 years. Many districts come to the voters every few years to ask for more operating money. In the 20 years I have served on the Board of Education, we have asked our community for new operating monies one single time. And please listen to this, we have no plans to ask for any more in the foreseeable future. About two years ago, I encouraged Pat and Jeff to look at switching our health insurance program. I'm pleased to say that we did switch and for a family plan, our employees will pay 22.5% less in 2016 for the premiums than if we had stayed at the old plan. We have union negotiations next spring. When I became president, we instituted a very simple objective. Achieve a negotiation outcome that is fair to our teachers, our community, and the Board. Fighting that point of equal living is very difficult. Last December, I taught a kindergarten class and no matter what you may have heard, I started the day with 20 students and I ended the day with 20 students.[274.58][274.58](Laughter) Even if one or two misabused during the day.[277.54][277.54](Laughter) My respect for teachers grew even more that day and I learned much that I want to apply to our next negotiations. Teachers have a difficult job and are deserving of the salaries they make. But we have to balance that with the economic challenges of our community. That takes experience and leadership and I will work until fairness is achieved once again this spring. After 20 years of Board service, the past 13 as Board President, my passion remains just as high as when I first ran. It is not time to stop. It is not time for new direction. It is time to continue the successes we have had over the past several decades. I believe I have proven my contributions to be very meaningful. I believe I have earned the trust of the community. And I believe my leadership has been exactly what Portland City Schools have needed to excel.
Thank you, Ms. Phil.
We have made significant progress and I ask for your vote on November 3rd.[326.62][326.62](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Next up, we have Ms. Beth Banko.
When I was first elected to the Board eight years ago, I was grateful and excited for the opportunity to be involved in bringing my experiences to the table to help shape the school district for the state need. By trade, I am an attorney and CPA and have spent over two decades helping Fortune 500 companies plan for and sometimes defend complex tax situations. I am the author of a nationally recognized tax series and I spent many years teaching tax concepts to graduate law students at Georgetown University in Washington, DC. Under all of that, I am fundamentally the same shy kid who walked through the halls of PCHS, sat in its classrooms, marched in the band, and kicked tennis balls on the tennis courts, all the while wondering where life would take me next. I am and always will be a proud Portlandian. It is with that pride in where I am from and knowing that I can contribute that I ask for your vote for another term as a member of the Portland School Board. The state of the Portland City School District is strong. Due to the tireless, needless efforts of our superintendent, our treasurer, our building administrators, and our teachers, our district is a giant example of first-rate public education in the state of Ohio. Each day, these individuals answer the challenge to provide exceptional educational opportunities for our students. This is done in spite of the numerous obstacles coming from our representatives in Columbus who cut funding, impose ever-changing learning standards, and even call for teachers and schools to begin a score without giving them much say in the players or even the game plan. The district needs a school board that offers stability when the outside influences continue to insist on change and for the mere sake of change. I offer best ability and proven experience. Students today face a world that is different than the world that was present decades ago. When the children today use the internet to communicate and find the answers to their questions or are competing with children not from the neighboring town or county but from the country on the other side of the world, their lives are different. They need computers. Your Board and Superintendent can work to place laptop computers in the hands of every student from the fifth-grade line. They need exposures to multiple disciplines. I have worked to bring co-studying science classes to the elementary schools so that young students might embrace the hands-on experience of science and discovery. The generosity of this community allowed us to focus on more sophisticated spending facilities and education offerings so that students interested in engineering and technology could be further developed. Students need to be able to overcome cultural and language barriers with nations that are present on the global stage. Today, we have a Chinese citizen teacher in the district so that Chinese is a core topic. Students need opportunities to jumpstart around college so that college remains affordable and the opportunity for experimenting with different disciplines is available. Together, we work to make college more available to students, even bringing some classes into the high school so that the high school experience was not lost. These are only some of the efforts that we have made during my tenure to help prepare students for the global society that they are facing. And I am committed to continuing those efforts in a collaborative manner. Beyond students, today's teachers have challenges and responsibilities too, including ever-changing standards for curricula and evaluation. Teachers are in a crosshairs with every critic who thinks that public education can be better. With this understanding, I worked to develop what is known as the Navigator Program for teachers. It seeks to monetarily reward teachers who want to participate in trying something new and innovative in their classrooms. It is paid based on performance, not on student measurement. Enthusiastic and innovative teachers are a scarce resource and a school district lucky enough to have them, as the Portland District is, must show its appreciation. I remain committed to finding constructive and creative ways to accomplish that. Finally, you, the taxpayers, are impacted more and more by representatives in Columbus who have had decades to figure out funding for education only to come up with the idea that you should be taxed more. In my experience, the constant threat to our district is an economic one. And that threat continues to grow large. Most recently, our governor reduced the district's funding by close to a million dollars. Our district is fortunate to have a treasurer who is focused on saving. I have worked to bring the story of PC to Columbus so that lawmakers can hear the late year against little to lie in the pockets of an aging fixed-income population who will willingly support their school district by whatever means, if only such means were available. Your Board did not move forward with building a new stadium until two-thirds of the funding for it was privately funded. Your Board understands the need for a rainy day and saving for that rainy day rather than just spending money because of this day. I remain committed to respecting you, the taxpayers, who provide us the funding to educate children. I am asking for your vote so that I might continue the united fight for the children of our community, bringing and continuing to bring honor to the motto "We are PC."
Thank you.[643.14][643.14](Applause)
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Jessica Lynn Philmore.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank you for attending this evening. It means a lot to see so many familiar faces and their faces. My name is Jessica Philmore and I'm a resident of Portland, which is also where I own and operate my salon. I have been happily married to my husband for 15 years and have three daughters together. These girls are my inspiration to be a better person every day. My oldest, Isabella, is a freshman at the high school. Katarina is a sixth grader at the middle school and Aurora is a third grader at the town intermediate. I have worked in the city of Portland since 2002 and in 2009, opened my own salon downtown. The same year, my husband and I decided to relocate our families to Portland. We made this move because we wanted our goal to grow up in this beautiful town and have the opportunity to attend Portland schools. It is a choice I have never regretted. I made the decision to run for the Board of Education after reading arguments written by a former Portland resident, Robert Putnam. His observations were not easy to hear by any means, but many have been very true and inspire me to try my best and impact with our youth. Once elected, I attended the voice for all of the children attending Portland. I have been volunteering at the town primary for the past seven years. I have been lucky enough to work alongside teachers, help kids in vigilance reading, participate in programs for children, and attend many field trips. Through these experiences, I have seen firsthand this gap Mr. Putnam refers to. Children who are being raised in secure, financially sound homes have an advantage over those who are not. Seeing it firsthand is more startling than you can imagine. Forty-six percent of Portland students live below poverty level. Forty-six percent. There are many ways to help bridge this gap. Early education and implementing work programs for children and their parents would be a great start. We need to build a stronger foundation for our elementary students because these formative years hold the keys to their prosperity in education and life. I also feel we need to better prepare our high school students. Many of you might not be aware, but almost all the life skills classes are no longer offered in high school. This includes home education, welding, speech, and parenting. There are also very minimal electives to choose from as a student, which is why we currently have a study hall with 70 students in it. And that's one study hall. There needs to be more emphasis placed on preparing our students for Portland's workforce. Because the reality in Portland is more teens are graduating and entering into the workforce than going to college with successful graduation. We have so many amazing resources available here. By creating career-based programs within our schools such as marine mechanics and hospitality, we are providing our graduates a location that will not only enhance their lives but also encourage them to stay throughout this candidate process. I have talked with many people, school staff, community members, and students. Their perspectives are all unique. Both one common statement I've heard time and again is that change would be a great thing for our school board. I am hoping you will depend on me to do that change you're looking for. I am a skilled listener who will address your concerns to the absolute best of my ability. I will have to compromise. That is very important in the role I'm seeking. But I am strong enough to hold true to my core values, even if that means I am sweetie dough. A vote for me is a vote for Portland's children. Thank you very much.[875.66][875.66](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Next up, we have Ms. Susanna Leone.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Susanna Leone. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, for our sponsors, our moderators, and my fellow candidates for giving the community an opportunity to start talking about education again. I'm excited also to have the opportunity to be able to talk to you about my experiences and the reasons why I'm running for the Portland City School Board and why I am the best candidate. My mom and dad have both taught me a very strong work ethic, which has led me to be successful in school and earned four degrees, including my doctorate in educational leadership. I can only hope to teach my own children those very same work ethics. I have a son who was graduated in the class of 2013, maybe David, the class of 2015, and Michael will be in the class of 2016. And then, of course, Vince graduated the class of 2011 in Elmore Heights. My teaching experience includes teaching in Maple Heights, which is near Cleveland, Ohio, and in Sandusky in grades six through 12 throughout my whole teaching career for students with emotional and behavioral challenges. And I've taught in a resource room setting in a separate facility and also in a conclusion setting to support the students who were able to handle it there as appropriate. I am currently starting my 23rd year in education. Education is my passion. But specifically, my passion is for that student underdog. The student who has disabilities, the student who is on free and reduced lunch, the student who, well, you fill in the blank. The student who, that could be anybody, that is struggling with anything. I mean, their parents are divorced, they didn't have breakfast this morning, they didn't have a bed to sleep in. That could really describe any one of our students that are, who are serving here in Portland City Schools. And we need to level the playing field for everyone, for one reason or another. I have spent my career fighting for these students, the ones who have the challenges. In my role currently as a special education administrator in Washington local schools, I supervise all of the programming for the emotionally and behaviorally challenged population in the heart of district as well as support, supervise, train, and evaluate special education staff. Additionally, I collaborate with my colleagues and building administrators regarding curriculum, safety, discipline, and transition planning for all students, but especially for students with disabilities. I am fortunate to have the opportunity to work with teachers and staff who are in the same position that I have held in the past. I can spread my passion and knowledge to them. Additionally, my role as a faculty member at the University of Toledo, I can help to educate teachers, future teachers, about important characteristics and qualities that are needed in schools as they enter into the field of education. Many people have asked me why I would want to run for this position. I can assure you that my interest in the Portland School Board has nothing to do with my husband being the mayor of this state. I believe I am fully qualified and capable to be a Board member on my own merit. I graduated in 1993 from Bowling Green State University with a bachelor's of education. In 2004, from the University of Toledo with a master's of education specializing in severe behavior. In 2008, I earned my specialist in administration and supervision. And 2009, I earned my doctorate in educational leadership from Bowling Green State University. My 23 years of experience in education, in the classroom, in meetings with parents, in meetings with my colleagues and other administrators, on home visits, listening to parents cry, complain, yell at me, celebrating, with parents celebrating a small success that their student made or celebrating a graduation of a student that they never thought would make it, make me the most qualified candidate. Others may argue that I'm lacking a financial or business background. However, I believe that I am in the business of kids. Superintendent Atkins referred to Robert Putnam's book in his 2015 commencement speech and talked about our kids. I believe it is very important that we don't forget about all of the students in Portland. We have a unique and diverse population in our district and it's my desire, should I get elected as a Board member, to ensure that all decisions are made in the best interest of all students. Thank you.[1189.66][1189.66](Applause)
Thank you very much, Dr. Leone. Well, now beginning our question period, I would like to point out that all of our questions this evening came from the community, as well as many questions from the Portland High School's government class. This next round of questions, we'll be asking one question to each of the four candidates and they'll each be able to respond within two minutes. Our first question, we're going to start off with Mr. Belden. How would you describe the current state of the Portland City School District? And what is the role of a Board of Education member?
I think the best way I could answer it is to repeat my statement I gave at the beginning. I think our schools are in excellent shape. I think there's two things that I'm most proud of. Number one, in 20 years, my picture has never been on the front page of the paper. That's the way I want it. That means our school system is running well. It's running well because we, as a school board, have hired two fantastic administrators. Pat Atkins, second to none. Jeff Dornish, second to none, although I think Cajun's going to give him a pretty good run. Our school system is in excellent shape academically. It's in excellent shape financially. Our facilities are second to none. The officials were in this week to look at our football stadium to see if we might be a good place to host a state playoff game. And the gentleman who is here said that of the most recent 100 facilities he's seen, ours is in the top 10. We have a remarkable community that has been very supportive of our Board of Education. Thank you, Portland, for everything you've done to support what we do as a school system. That's critical to us and I think that's a reflection of the trust and the faith that you have in our current school board. I hope you will keep us intact so we can continue the job that we're doing. Thank you.[1325.10][1325.10](Applause)
Thank you, Mr. Belden. Ms. Banko, you have the same opportunity to answer that same question. I can repeat it if anybody needs one to.
Well, the role of the Board of Education, firstly and fundamentally, legally is to hire a superintendent and a treasurer. That's really the extent of what we are allowed to do. But I think that going beyond that is our role as a Board to be supportive of the individuals who we've chosen to lead our district. And not to micromanage them, but to work collaboratively with them, as with all of our other Board members, to come up with the vision that we see for our district and to rely on them through our counsel and encouragement and support to allow them to push the administrators, the teachers, the staff, the students, to achieve those goals. And I think that, to your question of the state of our district, I believe, I answered that in my opening statement, although probably rather quickly since we had a nice individual up here waving signs that we needed to not talk to. But I believe that the state of our, excuse me.[1404.14][1404.14](Laughter) I believe that the state of our district is strong. And we are strong financially. And I think that is key to allowing all of the other things that have come to our district to happen. So long as we continue that strong foundation of finance and being ever-so vigilant there, we can let the fine teachers of our district work to do the job that they should be allowed to do without all of the outside influences. And that allows opportunity for all of our students and I will continue to support that.
Thank you, Ms. Banko. Ms. Philmore.
It's kind of hard to answer a question four times in a row. The third one. I would repeat that. I believe that the job of a school board member is to hire the right individuals, your administration, starting superintendent, the treasurer, on down the line, who are teachers, and quite possibly the lunch lady. I mean, a lot of stuff, a lot of decisions are based on what you think, but you're just one of five people. So you have to work together. And you have to look at a lot of things. Finances, they have done a decent job. Our school is in a great spot right now. We have a lot of money per se. We have more in our reserve fund than ECS, my own, your own, and Perkins combined. That's a lot of money. With that being said, sometimes, if I could be on the school board, I would hope that we could use that for certain things, to improve on certain things. Computers are wonderful and great, but I think the job as a school board member is also to consider what other educational things would benefit our community.
Thank you, Ms. Philmore. Dr. Leone.
I obviously would echo much of what was said since now I'm the fourth person to answer the question. But I do agree that Portland City School District is in excellent shape. You know, much in part because of all of the work that the Board and the administration has done. I think that the role of the Board is not just to hire the superintendent and the treasurer, although that is their job, but they also, their role is to collaborate together with one another so that they are doing the work that needs to be done to get the district to the state that it's in and continues to make better. You know, we can't just stand still and say, you know, the Board or the district is doing great. It's doing wonderful. We're just going to keep on doing everything that we've done. We need to continue to collaborate together so that we can continue to get better.
Thank you very much.
For our next question, we will start with Ms. Banko. Would you support any curriculum changes at Portland High School?
Absolutely.
And why? This is a question in 27 parts.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, we're not a stagnant district. We shouldn't be. The world is changing every day and we need to be prepared for that. You know, this state mandates particular things that a curriculum is supposed to add and somehow we're just automatically supposed to be able to accomplish that. It's not that easy. You need to have, you know, you need to provide the support to the teachers and the administrators of the district so that they can actually try to figure out what works best for the student makeup that they have, the student population that they have. You know, we're dealing with, I believe one of the candidates pointed out the statistics, but you know, kids today have difficult environments beyond school. Some live in public, free and reduced lunch, some come to school hungry. You know, some haven't seen one or both of their parents for months and/or overseas, you know, behind bars. You know, these are sort of the obstacles that, you know, our district faces along with all of the, you know, other types of students that are not there. And one curriculum size doesn't fail. And so I would absolutely support curriculum changes, you know, brought to the superintendent and then to the Board to approve based on, you know, whatever explanation is needed in order for it to be a good idea process.
Thank you, Ms. Banko. Ms. Philmore, same question. And I'll add why at the end this time.
I would absolutely support changes that were needed. But I think that, I could support them, but I'd have to go through the correct channels to time that. If it's needed, then why? I mean, I have a lot of great suggestions, but I'm not in a classroom with those children. The people that know best on what those children need are the teachers, over almost anybody, including the superintendent, because they're there every day. When I spoke to Pat this week, he even said that's one of the reasons why he still coaches and he's very involved in leading the schools is because you get a different experience with a child when you spend time with them, when we're used to observing whether statistics are in favor. It's just the way that, I think that we don't have to just look at how the world is changing. We have to look at ways to improve our community. It is not just Portland City Schools. It is Portland City Schools, it is Portland, it's Tava. All these things have to mesh together to create a better environment. I mean, 46% poverty with how much, if you average, the mean value, if you average out the house per child, it was like every child worth a $220,000 house. I'll look around the city of Portland and tell me how that makes sense. It doesn't, but it's because it's including Tava. Classes, we have to give kids education that's comparable to college and kids education that's comparable to stay here and live for. education that's comparable to stay here and live for, maybe go to secondary school. But not everybody's in some of the college. So I guess it's part of the teacher's job and administration's to figure that out, to figure out who needs what. And it's also our job to look at these children and say, what's going on? What can we do to help at a young age? So that way, when they're sophomores and they drop out, or they just don't care anymore, it's not too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fillmore. Dr. Leon, same question.
So I can't just say yes or no?
You can, but...
So, yes, I absolutely would support curriculum changes, you know, through discussion and collaboration with board members, administration, to see what is best for the students. I found an interesting statistic when I was looking up information to talk about, to write about, to think about. The board, we have a very high graduation rate. I mean, we, all of district report card ratings, you know, the graduation rate for four-year graduates is 95.1. For five-year graduates, it's 92.7%. Great, great, that's tremendous. However, I also found that for our students who go to college for the first time, for a four-year college or community college, 12% of them need remediation in math and English. 25% of them need remediation in just English. So those are really, really high percentages. So that, to me, says, hmm, what do we need to do differently in high school to fix those numbers that says they're not making it in college? You know, is there something different we need to do? You know, yes, we have all these tests that we need to teach to, to make sure that they're going to pass these tests, the test, the test, you know, because we definitely need to get them to pass the test to make sure we're making the grade on our district report card. But is that getting them ready for the real world? Is that making them ready to be successful in college? You know, we don't even have statistics yet about what the workforce, the military, or other, what are, in trade schools, how are they doing there? We'll have data on that in 2016. You know, so I think looking at curriculum changes, it definitely needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leon. Mr. Belden.
Of course, I would consider changes in curriculum. We've been doing that for a number of years. Just remember a few years back when we had the junior high and it became the middle school. Big change there. We had a team teaching. Just this past year, Hannah Van Doren over at Bryant Primary now has the first, second, first and second graders, I believe, that they go from one classroom to another in efforts to enhance the curriculum. We have one of the best curriculum directors in all of Northwest Ohio. He's sitting right over there, his name is Jack Nitz. But Jack Nitz came to me and said, I think we ought to try this for curriculum. You can bet I would listen closely. We need to continue challenging our students. We need to continue raising the bar, and absolutely anything we can do that would help a tide grow, learn, engage, absolutely would be considered.
Thank you, Ms. Fillmore.
For our next question, we'll begin with Mrs. Fillmore. This should be a short one. This past year, this past school year started earlier than ever before, on August 19th, as a matter of fact. Do you support a summer vacation from Memorial Day to Labor Day? Why or why not?
I believe that we should not start school until after Labor Day, and that we should get out on Memorial Day. Because that is our town's number one time to make money. Everybody knows this, no matter what you build, people come and sell it. They love here, it's beautiful, and they want to spend money here. And with having a 46% poverty, great, we need our kids to have summer jobs to help contribute to their family income or even just their own. There's a lot of people that live here that in the winter, they are on benefits or unemployment because they don't have jobs in the winter, they're just summer workers. By waiting for our school year, it helps stretch that out. Because now, you can see it with businesses, right? I have a business downtown, so I have seen it firsthand. When school starts, people start to go away. I mean, by this time of year, it's not the same. So I definitely support that. I can see giving a week or two, especially two at the end, but I really think we should not start until after Labor Day. Thank you.
Dr. Leon.
I think that this is a question that is controversial in the community right now. I think that this is an easy yes or no question. I think that there needs to be more discussion about it. I think that one of the, we need to gather more information. I think we need to maybe survey the stakeholders, talk to businesses, talk to parents, see what it is that they think is best. At least gather some information before we just say, yes, we're changing the school calendar. You know, because there are advantages and disadvantages to changing that calendar. You know, when we have our kids in school, we know at least that they're getting meals, they're having the adequate supervision that they need, especially when we're talking about the high free and reduced lunch population that Port Clinton is having right now. You know, so do we really want to have them in school less time, you know, if we're cutting the calendar shorter? But obviously, there's advantages to the businesses so that they can keep their employees for a longer summer. And those, same thing, when you look at it for the low, it's free and reduced lunch, if they're working, they could be their family's only income so that they'd be able to work longer. So, you know, you really need to look at it from both sides, survey your stakeholders, and then decide and collaborate as a team, as a board, with the administration to see what's going to be best for the school and the community. Thank you.
Mr. Belden.
Our school calendar is a collaborative project that's accomplished by PCFT, OPEC, and the administration. They sit down and they bring a calendar to the school board every year. They brought it this year, and I'm on record as saying, I think we started too early this year. I think August 19th was too early. I think we need to find a balance between what the business owners need, but we can't put that ahead of the education of our children. One of the reasons it was brought to us with that was the testing that's done by Ohio Department of Education. They moved the test up. Why we teach, why we take the test in March is beyond me. But because they do that, everybody wants to get as many days in educating our students as they can before those tests. So the reason for doing it were very strong, very valid. But again, I think it's too early, and I think we need to delay that just a little bit. But it sure would help us if the folks in Columbus would get their act together on the number of tests that we take and the time, the timing of the tests that we take. Thank you.
Ms. Banko.
I would like to comment that there are a lot of key issues that I would like to also point out that, you know, with the state, OPEC, particular numbers of hours that students need to be in classrooms for curriculum, learning, and things like that, that all goes into the mix as well, and the calendar that was brought to the board to approve. So, I mean, I guess I would point out, you know, yes, we could probably, you know, put everything in between, you know, the months of September and May if we lengthened the school day. But again, you know, we need to consider the students. You know, they're in school, sometimes get off the bus at 6:00 in the morning, by 2:00 in the afternoon, they're tired, and they need to be able to learn something. And so we need to remember that, yes, the businesses in Port Clinton and the service industry that we provide are important, but we have competing interests, and we try to make the right balance with all of those competing interests, always with the student mind first.
This is the final question, and Dr. Leon will be first. Another, in another example of school funding uncertainty, news media reports explain that Ohio's governor vetoed certain school funding designated for Port Clinton City Schools earlier this summer. How will you deal with this and other funding uncertainties?
Again, like I said when I gave my opening statement, you know, I don't have a strong financial or business background, but I am only one vote on the school board. So I would rely on collaboration with my fellow board members to, on funding issues. I know that we have one of the largest variable balances in similar-sized districts in this area, so I know that, you know, a million dollars is a lot of money, close to a million dollars is a lot of money. But we do have the money there to use, you know, but we need to fight as hard as we can to get that money back. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leon. Mr. Belden, same question.
The governor went against the House and the Senate and took away some tangible property taxes from our district. It's due to the strong fiscal management of the school system over the past 20 years that we can survive a cut like that and not have to worry about cutting any programs, not have to worry about laying off any teachers, but continuing business as usual. I can show you examples, many examples of what we've been trying to do already to overcome the actions of the governor. And Cajun and Jeff Dornbruch have been very instrumental in talking to groups in Columbus and trying to get this decision overturned. But I fall back on my statement earlier. We have no plans to come to this community and ask for any extra operating dollars, even though we have $752,000 cut facing us not this year, but next year. I can assure you, one of our goals that we have set for this year is to overturn that. There are 110 districts, I believe, that were affected by the governor's veto. Those 110 represent the majority of districts across Ohio, and together we are fighting to get this overcome. But I can stand here and tell our union people in the back, there'll be no layoffs. I can tell our community that we have no additional tax dollars because we've done our work in preparation for anything that comes out of our office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belden. Ms. Banko, same question.
Yeah, I did have a big debate today, and as you said, it's true. I mean, we have to be ever vigilant of what's coming out of Columbus. I referenced that in my opening statement. You know, the governor believes that because we have a healthy financial situation, that somehow it's okay to take something away from us and give it, you know, to other districts. And, you know, you, the taxpayers, are the ones that have given us the funding that we have to work with. And I believe that it's our responsibility to guard that, you know, money as if we are guarding our own, and to invest it financially very wisely, to spend it wisely, and if we have a little bit of that going for a rainy day, we'll certainly be ready. And I don't apologize for that. I will vote in Columbus and let them know exactly why it is that we have a healthy financial district, and know what it is that Port Clinton is facing every day. And I am happy and proud to have been a part of developing and maintaining our superintendent and treasurer, the healthy situation that we have financially.
Thank you, Ms. Banko. Mrs. Fillmore, please.
I'm not going to hear everything, but you're correct. I would definitely fault my treasurer and board, figuring out how to operate our block in Columbus or even the federal block in Columbus. We have $14 million in our carryover account. That is a lot of money. With that being said, we talked about how we're not laying off and how we're not making cuts, but we are, because our district has two nurses for three buildings. They had an average of 9,000 visits to their office last year because of sick kids. And if they're not available, then a secretary has to distribute insulin to diabetics. There's no reason every school should not have a nurse, so that means that we're not hiring a nurse, which saves us money. We have a part-time art teacher in our high school, and our art department, our whole curriculum base, isn't what it used to be. I heard stories from my friends who used to go to high school here and major in art and had a career in art, and it upsets her to know that it's now part-time and there is no big art show, and there are no people applying for art scholarships because it's just not as important as it used to be. You want to build a good nest egg for your school. You don't want to have to ask for money from taxpayers. I know, I'm a taxpayer. I pay my taxes, and it comes out somewhere. But you should utilize some of the money to make it a stronger school, not just a strong nest egg. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fillmore.
Now, we're going to allow up to two minutes for closing comments. We're going to begin with Dr. Leon.
Thank you. I again want to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to talk about education. It's been a long time since there's been a contested school board race, so it's exciting to have education being talked about in the community again. I'm not that it hasn't been talked about because Port Clinton City Schools are so great, but actually having a discussion up here in front of the community has been exciting. So thank you again for your time, listening to all of us, and vote for Dr. Leon on no more record.
Mrs. Fillmore.
Thank you to everyone as well, and thank you so much to my family for tolerating this. I'm a very busy person. I am a mother of three, I'm a business owner, I'm a pet lover, I have a pretty large house, and I'm a very busy person. But I'm so happy to give an opportunity to do this, and what a great country we live in that we can do whatever we try to. I've had so much fun learning and researching. It has opened my eyes to so many things I wasn't aware of, but at the same time, helped me secure what I believe to be correct and what I think should, you know, be important to us and citizens and for our students. My girls watching me go through this is a great example, because I just taught them that no matter what you do, if you try hard enough, you can do whatever you want. Even running has been exciting. I hope to win, but I support everyone on stage. I mean, it's hard to stand up here, and everybody that has to talk today, it's not an easy thing. It's nice that we live a community that we can have this, and it's, you know, it's good. I hope that talks about our school continue. I hope that people don't have close years and that we are able to make progress together. And I hope that I remember what I'm doing. Thank you.
Ms. Banko.
I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and listening through these questions, all about financing, curriculum, and things like that. And I must say that Suzy and I are especially, we didn't ask us what a date it was, but that might be a school-related type of question. You know, there's records earlier related to Dr. Borden, and some of the things he's pointed out about our community. And yes, we do have our obstacles that we need to overcome. But I think that one thing that maybe Dr. Borden doesn't have, that the board and the state and the state do, is that we're here every day, and we're trying. And we're trying to overcome the obstacles, and we all do see quite a bit of good in this community, and especially, you know, our younger generation. So I just want to bring up that and thank everybody who actually, you know, steps up and decides that they want to get a shot at serving, because there's a lot of the internal and external, you know, good feeling that can come from that. So I would like to go for another term, and I would appreciate your vote, but, you know, I remain and will always remain proud to be a Port Clinton City, no matter what happens under the organization.
Mr. Belden.
Before I hear my comments, I want to respond to one thing that Jessica said, and that's, you know, if you have $14 million, you don't want to just build that nest egg that she's completed. and she's completely right there. Last year, a group of teachers came to Board of Education meeting and asked us to invest in some laptops for them. We said we would. We challenged some other grades to see if they would want to do the same thing, and it resulted in one of the best presentations I've ever seen as a school board member, and we elected to invest $150,000 into some computers. From what I understand, I think some third-grade teachers are about to approach us as well, and I think they have a good chance to get what they want. I'm very proud of the certain Portland City Schools for the past 20 years, with teachers being the heart of our system. I respect well beyond anything you can imagine for what they do, and that will leaps and bounds last December 23rd, when I was allowed to teach kindergarten for one day all by myself.
Wow.
The success I've had in life comes from my parents and my education, my teachers included, me, it's your hard-time Jim Radloff, Octa Kincaid, Tom Avad, Margaret Ledke, Jeff Williams, and many others. They all gave me something that added to who I am. Now I see Erin Benner, Ryan Everts, Harry Fied, Ty Roth, Daniel Ayer, Rod Miller, Morgan Sipps, Jeff de Blas, Samantha Lipsfroh, Jim Lamb, Stephanie Prilock, and many others who are parting those same things to my children, my grandchildren, and our community. They are the core of a great team, and I want to continue serving as a conduit between our community and our team ensuring that our success continues. My service comes with many yeses, a few noes as well, but that is necessary in the search for equilibrium and fairness. It has been my honor and my privilege to serve Portland for the past two decades. I hope you feel my contributions have been meaningful, and I ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you very much.
And thank you all, ladies and gentlemen, your candidates for Portland City School District Board of Education. Thank you.